So let me start with kind of the way in which you presented yourself at last week's debate, which is as an outsider who would bring a fresh perspective and a very different perspective from current board members. As a relatively recent, it's been what 15 or 16 years since you graduated from GUN. But certainly you would be the youngest person on this school board and bring in a lot of fresh new ideas and especially around the field of technology. So I'm wondering if you could elaborate on that a bit and in particular your focus on technology and its use in the schools.
There's many components to this particular area, but I guess just to make sure it's all encapsulated in the story, I graduated from Nixon and JLS and then GUN. And being a GUN graduate, being a graduate of the Palo Alto Unified School District, I feel it brings a perspective that is very useful and isn't necessarily the top pick for most people. They might want to parent, you know, just but I feel like it brings the potential of having a rounded board, you know, having a board that is able to see different perspectives and be able to bring them into the conversation regardless of whether the board would vote on them, right? So in that context specifically, my primary platform per se in the context of me running for office multiple times is bringing our democracy or 21st century democracy up to the technological level that it's capable of. I feel that a lot of our systems are rooted in 200-year-old democratic processes, which isn't necessarily a bad thing, it's the best thing we have, it's great. So what would that entail? I feel like primarily that would entail online direct involvement of the public on decision-making processes. So the easiest way to describe that, you know, getting into some detail, the term I use is the democratic trilogy, which is kind of seems a little lofty, it's like Florida the minis, but it's really simple. We have a representative democracy which works great and so I would couple that with participatory democracy and direct democracy and bring in more palates, right? So the context of that is participatory democracy would be meetings where the public can come and actually meet, you know, for three hours, talk about issues, be involved in the processes that are going on. And then direct democracy would be online clicking, right? So every single decision that the board makes, every single proposal the board has should be online in a forum where the public can go onto it, click, you know, yes, no, put comments in so the board can get direct feedback in real time. And I feel like the technology is there, it's very simple, it's just about implementing it. Whether the other board members would want to use it, it really doesn't concern me. You know, my use of it was be what matters for reflecting my individual vote in the context of representing the public. So I think that more or less brings that context. Obviously participatory democracy is an old-fashioned system. You'd be sitting in a meeting, have this meeting where, you know, instead of just a two to three-minute, you know, speech at the beginning of a board meeting, you actually allow the public to be involved in a discussion as opposed to just watching. So I think that that is pretty clear as far as, you know, the decision-making process. The other context that you were alluding to was technology in the classroom. And so the technology in the classroom is really exciting because I feel that from my personal experience as being a young person going into the 21st century workforce, the economy is changing and evolving and it's changing and evolving very, very rapidly. I would say the majority of jobs that I've had, if not all of them, are utilizing not only technology, but they utilize a technology in reference to working with engineers. You know, so you're, even if you don't directly sit down with engineers and work with them, you're constantly giving feedback on the applications on the web systems to improve them when that feedback goes to engineers who are then working on the code to improve the systems. So with that said, I feel that it makes a lot of sense and I've heard it many times from technology leaders in Silicon Valley that our schools should represent the future economy, that every student really should be learning basic coding as a prerequisite through, you know, through normal public education. And I think it's something that could be incorporated either through math or its own course load. I feel like it's a pretty simple process. The key important thing to note before I turn back over to you would be that I'm very grounded in the context of what the board is capable of and what a board member's role is. And that specifically would mean that there's no way to implement, you know, teaching coding by being elected a board member, right? So at best my goal would be to institute a process to review and get a case study to see the feasibility and what that would mean, not only for the local level, but it would also potentially involve state and/or national changes in, you know, what students would need to learn as their, as a prerequisite. So it's a long-term process. Cool.
Done. So as you've jumped into this race, which is one of many elected offices that you've sought, in the prior offices that you've run for, has this been a similar platform and theme, this emphasis on direct democracy and technology as a means of participation by the average citizen?
Yes.
Okay, so that's the common denominator here among your political interests.
It's definitely been a common theme as far as all of the campaigns that I had run.
And then what inspired your decision to run for this office? What took place that made you decide, okay, I'm gonna run?
Well, there's two things. One goes back to, well, I'd say this, this easiest answer is that my supporters told me to, right? So I go to my supporters, I ask them, you know, where do they think I should run for office? Two years ago, you know, there was a lot of political activity going on in the community, you know, specifically Occupy was happening all over the world. And in that context, there was a group of people and a group of, you know, supporters who very interested in running for Congress for whatever reason, people were just pushing that, we need to hire a new Congress, you know, based on, obviously Occupy fizzled out. You know, I don't necessarily support all of the views in Occupy, you know, so, but there's a key important demographic in the context of the economic changes and evolutions that need to happen that I certainly am aligned with. But the way that they went about doing it, I might not be so supportive of. But specifically in this particular race, my supporters suggested school board. So that was, you know, more of a local level, something that can have a better chance of, you know, building up a political career. And of the two school board elections, the other school board election, which was Foothill College, which I actually am very aligned with because I have direct experience in running a university system, being elected to student government when I was at UC Santa Cruz. I mean, there's incumbents are running in that election. And just to be realistic, I mean, it's, our democracy is sort of created in a situation where, you know, the incumbents have this huge advantage. So this is really the main election that's happening in our local community and so I'm very excited about being involved in it. And I'm not a big proponent of incumbents and so I don't plan on running as an incumbent. But in the context of this particular election, I feel that I may have in the past run for city council of Palo Alto, but there's that line, Stanford, and I live in Stanford and so I'm not able to cross that line. So this is the only, the only local elections I can even run for at all, which is why in the past I've run for these non-local elections.
So you haven't, in the earlier debate, nor yet today, raised any specific issues that pertain to the way in which this school board or this district has operated in ways that you think could be done better or that motivated you to run. So as you've absorbed through your interactions with the public and superintendent and other candidates over the last few weeks, what are your views on where this district needs to focus the greatest amount of its attention? And as a board member, you know, what are the things that you're gonna put at the top of your list of priorities?
Of all the things, which one? You have a very open, broad question. Great. I think you're alluding also to, you know, my interest in running for this election, you know, dates six months back and maybe a little further, since I've been involved in a lot of research and being a newbie, which I think is a great thing, that I don't have, you know, a preconceived agenda coming into this election. I'm very open to learning from the community and that's my number one priority is, you know, sucking that information like a sponge and then, you know, understanding it and also allowing interactivity, you know, to, for the community to build that agenda and that priority. But specific things I've heard from the past is obviously there's been some controversies with the board, both with the civil rights issues as well as just general transparency. And I guess the easiest way to put it would be, I feel that there is a, the systems that are currently done, you know, really centralizes power not only just in the board itself, but in the space where the board exists, mainly being, you know, two-hour meetings once a week. And so in that space, the people who show up to that space are, you know, the best way to, you know, use vocabulary to describe them would be kind of insiders, you know, so there's this inside circle of people who go to all the board meetings and really know everything that's going on there. And I've chosen not to attend board meetings at this point in time, you know, partly for that reason. And I've also chosen not to, well, I'll just leave it there, but in general, I feel that that space needs to be opened up, you know, so that the idea that you have a very few number of people involved in the space where that's, that decision-making processes entail can be opened up much more broader to a much bigger community utilizing technology. So that's one thing that can be done. Another thing is really rethinking the budget. One of the things that just blows my mind is, and I don't know if this is done on purpose, I just don't really understand it, is that the idea of a 10-line item budget, that's a, you know, $200 million. And of course, the $200 million budget is one-third of this $600 million budget of bond measure, right? So everything that's been given to me currently at this point, and I can show you, I have it right here, is a 10-item, line-item budget. So that just needs to be improved, the whole budget process needs to be improved and there needs to be a lot more transparency in the budget. And my understanding is that they're doing that. It's happening, they're doing it within a week. There should be a pamphlet that goes over the budget, you know, that's maybe five, 10 pages. So that'll be great, it's still gonna be very, very basic. And then they're supposed to put a one-inch-thick, you know, detailed budget analysis on the web. And I'm very excited about looking at that and really peeling through every little detail of it and really understanding how the budget can be improved. A specific cornerstone of the budget which comes up again and again is the reserves. Both teachers, community members, and other people have things that they may want to propose to add in. And one great place to do that is the reserves. The reserves currently stand at 10% minimum and they've been that way, they've never gone below 10% ever. That rounds out to about fifteen, between 15 and 20 million dollars right now. And then in addition to that, there's an additional six to 10 million dollars. So right now the reserves sit at 25 million dollars. I feel that we would be pretty secure as a district at 5% because of the fact that it's never ever dipped below 10% ever in the history of the school district. So that could bring a lot of potential to alleviate some of the strains that are coming up in the community and teachers. And that is, I feel, is an important thing to address over time.
So let me just ask your question, comment about the budget and then let someone else ask a question. If you take reserves and use them to fund something other than the construction of a building or something that's a one-time expense, you then have that ongoing expense that then year after year has to get funded. So what is your approach to taking that, the money that you described as being excess reserves and investing it back in the schools?
Well, there's a big difference between reserve funding and the bond measure fund because the bond measure, there is a 70 million, $700 million bond measure. Of that, there's still $255 million left. So of that $255 million, there's $60 million that has not been budgeted. So that means that in addition to the $25 million reserve, there's an additional $60 million of reserves for bond measure to build buildings. So in the context of your question, it really wouldn't address the $25 million because the bonds in actually building buildings comes out of the $60 million additional reserves. So it's really a total of like 90 million or 85 million. And I do have ideas for, I don't necessarily feel like they're my ideas, but I feel that the direction, you know, everyone always talks about, you know, the 13th elementary school, which I think is great, and I talked about it at the forum, the idea of really enhancing the holistic educational opportunities for our community in the context of redoing Cumberley from the ground up, like literally like redoing the entire thing based on a mixed model of education. Yeah, so that's where I see the direction of the $60 million going. So I don't know if you want to rephrase your question to make sure I answered it.
I don't want to take any more time on that.
Okay.
So let me let Justin ask.
Well, I was gonna ask a question about, you threw out an idea at the forum that got a little bit of a discussion on our town square forum, which was, you were talking about having people track $5 million increments of the budget. Do you remember what?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, that's just been an idea of mine for a very long time, regardless of what budget we're talking about. I don't feel that there's transparency enough in government budgets. And government budgets are so huge, there's no, I mean, really, if you think about it, the only real transparency that comes from government budgets is the media. You know, the media and journalists who go through and dig through that budget on behalf of the people and then report back on it. So I feel like $5 million increments is a reasonable figure that some, that an individual can really pile through, potentially 10 million, right? So if you split the entire budget up, no matter how big it is, into $5 million increments and some people could potentially take on two, you know, or three of them.
And who would these people be?
Any, and it would be volunteers. Yeah, so anybody who was interested in doing it. The feeling I feel is that you would really have a very quick, you know, five-minute review of the budget to kind of put it into categories, you know, complicated $5 million, simplified $5 million. I'm guessing the majority of them may fall in the simplified area where there's, it's almost a sub-line item, you know, because it's just, there's this big line item that might be $30 million and it's really, it's hard to break it up into $5 million increments, so that would be really fast. But I think it is important to really dive into the budget and look at it in a much more detailed manner. And there's no way I could do that myself, I would need help. So I think that's really what that's saying.
Okay. You had also mentioned vocational training, or you talked to some GUN students, they wanted to feel prepared for the workforce. Were you specifically thinking about coding and coding for all students or were you thinking about vocational training as a separate component that's somehow lacking in the school district right now? So what does that look like?
Well, yeah, there's three things there. There's, there's the vocational training is really a specific type of educational system. And then there's the real-life skills, that the feedback that I'm getting from students that they want real-life skills. Coding could be seen as a real-life skill, but, you know, as it applies to getting jobs, but I feel that that's really its own section, you know, learning coding and whether or not we as a community want to bring that into our school systems is an issue in and of itself. So to make a clear distinction between the vocational training and the real-life skills, what the students were saying to me, which was very fascinating, was they feel that their academics are really well, that they feel that they're prepared academically, they're prepared, you know, to go into both college as well as potentially in some ways certain types of workforce. But that in the context of just going into the real world, it's, they feel like there's a blank space there that they're, and it's concerning to them, you know, they don't know where, what's gonna happen, basic things like paying taxes, you know, rent, you know, making sure their finances are in reasonable order. And these are all things that I never learned, both in college and in middle school. So the other key thing that they mentioned to that was that maybe the classroom's not the best place to learn real-life skills. And that was a really fascinating thing for me because how do you think out of the box, you know, as an educator, how do you work with students to learn something in a context where they feel comfortable learning it? That might not necessarily be the classroom and that's just a very interesting discussion happening. As far as vocational training, this is also an amazing discussion that comes up in the context that specifically European countries do a whole, you know, linear-based system of their entire educational system where they have vocational training and more broad-based training simultaneously. And you actually start learning and deciding that your kind of trajectory as early as ninth grade, you know, when you get into high school. And that's a very different way of perceiving it. And so you, the first question goes, would we even want to bring that into our current system here? And then the second question goes, how would we bring it or what options are there? And there's a few options. One is, Robert Reich was one of the persons who talks about it, but, you know, technician training is one of the big areas that is growing in our economy, where we're going to be more and more technicians, whether it's technicians or other types of vocational jobs, but, you know, students considering going directly into technicianal schools, you know, like two-year schools as opposed to going to four-year college. So that's like one option that could be directly brought into the counseling systems. And the other is the idea that I've talked about in terms of Cumberley being a multi-educational system, where you could have like elementary schools, extension, you know, middle school extension, as well as a high school system that is more tailored towards the current Foothill College extension that's at Cumberley, where high school students who want to study it in a more college environment. And I feel like that's important in the context, there's one thing that just rings my brains, just blurt it out right now, instead of waiting is, you know, I feel like our current educational system, both here is one of the best educational systems in the country, right? And as well as just out of the hole, it should be not necessarily reconsidered, but should be compared to, you know, new types of systems that our research is happening in the context of whether our, the best educational system is a linear model, right? And the key piece of information that I see over and over again is the absolute smartest students, right, of all the students just do not function well in our current system, right? So the top, top smartest, smartest students don't function in a linear grade one, grade two, grade three, grade four, grade five, right? They don't do that linear and they just jump all around and they're learning on the side and they're, and they're, there's bringing in so much information and by the time they're in middle school, it's not even fitting them, right? And they're already taking college classes by the time they're in middle school. So we might want to think about our educational system in the context of the brightest, smartest student should be an example of how to support the smartest, making everybody the smartest possible. So it's just one example of that in the context of why you might even consider a multi-generational educational model.
So this leads nicely into a comment you made last week about where to look for innovations that could be tried and utilized in our district. And your response to that question was, well, we can't really look in California and we can't really look in the United States, so we've gotta go overseas someplace to find real innovation in education. Can you expand on that? And do you really feel that you've not seen any examples of innovations that are taking place in public schools in this country that we really could try here in Palo Alto?
Well, the answer is no, of course. There's lots of amazing, you know, innovations and options, you know, both in California as well as in the country. So there's, there's no question that we must be, and not to mention, our system is in alignment with California and the country. So it's much easier to implement, you know, successful solutions that have been happening both in California and the United States than implement things that might not necessarily be implementable from other countries.
So there are a couple that you can share?
I mean, that's just not necessarily my personal area of expertise, right? So that's why when I think about, you know, educational opportunities, my research has mainly been, you know, and that's why I bring this up, right? So I'm not saying that I'm, you know, against any of them, it's just like I'm not personally knowledgeable about, you know, working in other school systems. Of course, as you know, I'm pretty new to the idea of researching and working within school system as well. And so when you're working with parents and working with teachers, they have a very, very much so, you know, broader context of what's happening in other schools and other school districts.
So this is a task that you would expect third educational professionals to take seats and go find some of these?
Yes, that, we definitely would want to be budgeting research for best practices. And also, you know, I think, believe it is a role of the board members to attend conferences and attend, you know, both state and national conferences to be a liaison and learn from best practices from other, from other schools. And that's something that I would be very interested in being a part of as opposed to just focusing on the local level. There's, there's, I feel like just one of the most recent things I've learned about, you know, because I'm going with my mind of like news articles and, you know, different things I've read over the years, and so they're slightly vague. But one of the things that the superintendent talked about, you know, because he has extreme amount of experience in the school districts that he's worked for. So both with, you know, improving school programs to increase the preparedness of college, right? And just, you know, blanket-level programs where they're improving, you know, in-classroom, you know, both training programs for the teachers as well as, well, implementing different types of testing systems to track it, you know? And there's amazing things that we're already bringing into the Unified Palo Alto School There's at least three of them and I have them written down here, but I'm gonna not go into all my notes at the moment while I'm talking, but there are at least three, you know, data information analytics programs, right, that some, but not all, schools have implemented, right? So, and that also brings us to another really important question, where you have, you know, these, these programs that are already coming to our district, how do we continue to implement them? Should they be implemented? Should they be forced upon other, other schools? And what does it mean to bring in a new program? And how, how would it be implemented and at which schools and, you know, to what extent? So we have a lot of programs already that either are half being implemented or being fully implemented at one school but not others. And the other one that the superintendent mentioned, which I think is great, which isn't necessarily best practice from a school, but that he wants to get, you know, parents specifically, as well as other community members who's come to him and say, you know, I'm a data analyst in my job, I have skills that I can add to the, to the district, I would love to help. And he's like, well, let's create a space for them to come in and, and work on data analytics. Why pay millions of dollars to a data analytics firm when we have a parent who wants to help? And that's an amazing idea that obviously he's implemented other places, but I feel that it could work here as well.
So can you describe some of the tensions of experimentation and innovation and the decision-making process of trying to roll these things out as best practices? But I haven't, and you weren't real clear on this at the debate, and I'd like to try to zero in on it a little bit more, as to your views on site-based decision-making. At the debate, you said you strongly support local school autonomy. That to me says local schools should have the freedom and flexibility to be able to do programs without them being considered experiments or innovations. But, so I'm not clear on what your philosophy is about. At what point do we make an evaluation and either implement a good program district-wide or terminate it as opposed to having 12 different programs going on at 12 different elementary schools?
So let's start by saying that the first thing that I've learned from my research of the school, our school system, really just in general school systems, is that there's no freedom for anybody. Nobody has a full autonomy anywhere, period, right? So in that context, you know, we exist in a system that is extremely, you know, controlled in the context, there's always gonna be standardized testing, there's always gonna be specific, you know, targets for students to meet and that constricts teachers in their processes. And then in addition to that, there's always going to be, you know, massive reporting and analytics and data that's just gonna have to happen. Like no one can get out of that, even the board, right? And then, you know, that, on that page 25 of the analytics from the strategic plan, you know, it says, on the very, very top, the question is, you know, how much power does the board have, you know, in relation to these types of decisions, right? And so on the top, for the number one issue that the board has the most power, right, it says 55%, which would mean that the board has about half of the decision-making power in the context to that particular issue, right? And that particular issue is analytics. How do we track and manage the data that is coming out of the schools? And so that's just amazing to me that, you know, the issue being analytics and tracking the data and the decision-making power of the board is still only 50/50 in the context of the site versus the district. So in that, in that context, I feel that, you know, data gathering and any trial-run program and/or a program that's being implemented across the district, you know, must be tracked in a way that is comparable, you know, across the district as well as with... as well as with, uh, other schools. And that's where Common Core comes in, and that'll be extremely beneficial, um, to understand how our district fits into the context of, um, you know, the nation as well as potentially even globally. So I think that's, that's a, a good place to, to put in context. So then going specifically into the question of, of autonomy. So I think it's important as a potential board member to be realistic. And I think that's where my, my statement comes in. I don't want to be the board member that's coming in, as I've seen before, thinking that they can do this top-down power to control how schools run. Because I think it's setting myself up for failure, I think that's setting up the school board for failure. And it's not creating an environment that is conducive to collaborative decision-making. And so in that context, I think the best situation is for the board and the district as a whole to prove to the school, this is the best way to implement because of X, Y, and Z. You know, there should, there should be no reason they don't want to implement a successful program if they have the data to back it up and if they have, you know, the resources to implement it without a, a budgetary crisis at their school. So I feel like there's those two things. One is, you know, why implement it? How to implement it? I guess there's three, how to implement it, and then making sure they actually have the resources to do it without feeling like they're constricted. So I hope that, I guess that's, it gets to a, a little bit, I don't know, if it helps.
Let me make it real basic. Right now, every school in this school district has a different student handbook. The three middle schools have three different dress codes. There are two different cheating policies between the two high schools. The two high schools have different counseling systems, and I could go on and on. Is that a good system in your mind? That, that allows each school to, um, develop those, uh, policies and approaches that they think is uniquely best for their school? Or is there, is, where does the district come into play there?
For me, the, you know, it has to be a, a program, an individual program approach. You know, looking at, you've just named five programs. I don't feel that you can look at all five of those programs and have a blanket approach to how the board, or how the district should, you know, think about how they're related to all of the schools. Um, specifically as counseling, I think that's probably the number one that I heard, where the analytics and the data of, of whether the students are getting the counseling that they deserve and want, and that the, if the results of the counseling must be up to a standard and it's not there. And so that needs to be a top priority issue, and it needs to be an issue that's addressed in how to implement a system that works for, for students at any school. But even in with that said, it's still okay for the counseling programs to have slight differences. But they must meet the same results. As far as the other issues go that you mentioned, um, I feel that all of the different handbooks and dress codes should be comparable to a certain extent, and you could potentially implement a, uh, this is the district-wide, you know, everything's the same for these particular issues, you know? And then you have, here is the, your local school's, you know, more detailed version of all things that differ in your school. So I feel like as a cultural, a culture, I personally, as an individual, feel that it's healthy to have different cultures at different schools and for the schools to function slightly differently. Is it efficient? Is it the best for, um, budget, tracking, all that stuff? Possibly not. It's possibly not the most efficient, but we're human beings. And I feel like the human touch of wanting a personality and wanting to be different is more important than, uh, everything to be machine-like. And I think, and I just thought that was my point of view. And I'm not saying that we shouldn't implement programs across the entire district, because there are gonna be programs that we do want to implement across the district. But those should come from the community, not from the board. The board shouldn't be, we want to do this because we're the board and we want to do it. It should be coming from the community, and it should be done in, in a very long-term trajectory. I mean, there's no way that the board's gonna make a decision and then suddenly, even within a year, it'll be implemented at all schools. That's just not realistic. And so to think that would ever happen is, I think, setting us up for failure. In the current system, that exists. If we change the system, that might change.
Are there specific program areas in which you could envision the community coming to the board saying, we want this to be uniform? Is there some, some particular need?
I mean, the counseling one is a huge top priority. And, I mean, if you think about as a community, the students are coming to us and telling it's not good enough. You know, not even just parents, right? So, and, and you can add that with just the whole stress, you know? Whether you're talking about counseling, whether you're talking about stress, you know, academic achievement, you know, I feel like those are all interrelated in some ways. There, there, how do you create unified analytics? Has that even been done? I, I don't know if that has been done. You know, the, the report that was outsourced to be gotten, never even necessarily, it looked at the, analyzed the two schools, you know, the two high schools as separate entities, and never specifically integrated the research, you know, to compare them. So that would be another step that could be taken. So, so that would be step one, what are the analytics for both schools that we want to track and to compare them? And I don't even necessarily feel that that has been done. So then, how to implement a, a set of, of specific guidelines for the counseling? The community could easily set those parameters and it could be done. And then it's the, the board's job to hold the superintendent accountable to implementing what the community wants. And that's, could take years. So, but it can't happen. You know, I definitely feel that it can't happen. It just needs to be done in a process that is realistic in the way that the structure is set up. Um, another key component of that specific issue is how do you create a decision-making space that is congruent with the process of holding the school accountable to self-organizing, right? The board, here you have the board, and then you have Gun and you have Pally. And it was the district, you know, the superintendent, the gun, and Pally. And so there's this top-down approach. How do you create a space where the board is meeting directly, you know, or board representatives meeting directly with the decision-makers at Gun and Pally at the same space at the same time? And together collaboratively, making a decision to implement programs at both schools. And in that space, Pally can hold Gun accountable, and Gun can hold Pally accountable directly, as opposed to it going, you know, around through the board. So I feel like it's important to have accountability directly between schools and within the schools themselves as well. And that would be kind of change in how decision-making processes happen, but that's a different, um, issue, but answered your question.
This is pivoting a little bit, but at the debate, um, you, I think it was someone's question about, one of the candidates' questions about something, work you've done with local youth that you're proud of, and you referenced that you've worked with Stanford students. I was wondering if you could, um, elaborate on that and tell us what, what work you've done.
For sure, for sure. The primary work that I was involved with was Stanford, and obviously I've, you know, gone to lots of different events at Stanford and lectures and, you know, roundtable discussions and like that on different issues, including sustainability. My background in community organizing is, and I, uh, from college of sustainability issues, right? So that's how I got involved. And so we brought, um, you know, all the sustainability issues to UC Regents as part of the UC system to implement sustainability. So in that context, I've been invited to sustainability roundtable discussions, you know, with Sustainability Office and other offices on campus to, um, how to implement sustainability practices at Stanford. One of the interesting things of growing up on Stanford campus and wanting, you know, in the nineties, wanting to see Stanford be more sustainable, and then going to UC Santa Cruz, expecting UC Santa Cruz to be the green college, you know, you know, at the beach, you know, with all the forests. And it was an amazing, um, experience, but Stanford has one of the best recycling and sustainability programs. It way, you know, surpassed what the level that UC Santa Cruz was due. So there was a lot of work to do at Santa Cruz, which I got involved in, we got it done, and they're still continuing. Um, so that's one of the things that I've been involved with, um, ongoing, more so in the past than currently. The other one is just, um, it was just a huge community upwell with the Occupy movement. You know, so there was just, you know, hundreds and hundreds of meetings that happened over the course of the year in, in Santa Cruz. My nonprofit organization focuses, not doesn't like focuses, you know, because we have a variety of umbrella projects, but one of our projects is, is educating facilitation skills, you know, organizing skills, you know, basic systems for, um, community organizations. So I've got involved in a lot of those projects to help support the students who came together to learn, you know, basic facilitation skills, you know, basic budgeting skills, you know, that types of stuff. And so I was, uh, just involved in those consensus-based decision-making meetings, which was very interesting and exciting. And we brought up issues to, um, you know, the administration as well as other people across the community about, you know, the role of Stanford at, in our society, you know, in the affluent slash, you know, not so affluent, because, you know, most, most teachers and, you know, individuals at Stanford aren't necessarily the 1%, you know, but they represent it. So that was, it was a fascinating experience working with the community there. And so they're still involved in some, um, programs that, you know.
More questions?
Well, yeah, I'll, I'll ask another one now. I'm sure this has come up in your conversations with students. There are students at the debate last week who didn't have a chance to, to ask questions that, um, we've asked candidates to respond to. And the biggest one that I think I've heard is this concern among students that, um, the grading policies and the homework, basically the, the rigor of classes taught, the identical same class taught by different teachers has quite a large variation. And there's a sense among some students that this is unfair and is a problem that needs to be addressed. Do you chop that concern up to the natural angst that students have and, and view it as something that they just need to buck up and live with? Just like you have to live with a bad teacher every once in a while? Or is there an actual problem needing to be solved?
Great question, and I love it that it's coming from students, because I feel like it's one of the most important things that we don't address enough. Before I jump into that question, one other minor thing popped into my head and related to the Stanford issue. I feel, I just want to quickly mention that I feel that in the context of some of the issues that have been coming up, where we want to provide out, you know, out external resources, whether it's internships or other activities for high school students specifically, where you can cross over El Camino, we have this amazing Stanford University campus, that I would be a huge proponent to encourage this collaborative relationship between Stanford, especially Pally and also Gun. And I feel like that I might be in a position to do that, knowing both faculty and knowing, you know, community members, administration at, at the school. Anyways, that's all I wanted to say. So going back to the student issue, which I think is extremely important, um, I think we have to take it ser, very seriously. It's just concern from students, we should take it seriously, and it is an issue that's very important and has to be addressed in a, in a professional manner. And that student should never be ignored, uh, in, in saying that they are, you know, that, oh, this just happens to everybody. There's always going to be variation from professor, professor, or teacher, teacher, and which is not a bad thing. You know, it's, it is a good thing. I remember those tough teachers, you know, both at Gun, you know, and other schools, where, you know, you're just like, oh no, I have the teacher, it's my turn, great. So one thing that you never notice in the classroom is that sometimes those really tough teachers, you learn lessons that later on in life actually, you didn't like it, but you learned something good. So that's one thing that comes in, that you don't actually see while you're in the, the process. So it's very important to get, uh, well, just going back to the second thing, is that the most important thing, I feel like for, for students, is to be heard. You know, students want to be heard, it's also a part of counseling, you know? How do you feel like you've been heard and you feel like your issue's been addressed? So when, I feel like one of the things that's missing for me as being a student, whether it was at college or in high school before, is the idea of 720 evaluation. You know, the idea that every single person on every single level, you know, both up and down, not just around you and who's working as your colleagues, but up and down, you know, the full 720, um, needs to be involved in evaluation and feedback, you know, direct evaluation, real-time feedback. And so, as, if a student has an issue with a teacher in the class, that, that, there needs to be a direct way to report that, you know, both confidentially and or publicly as needed. And that, that student should feel like they were heard and they should know that their feedback actually went in something that mattered. Because I feel like a lot of times student feedback just goes into the black box of, the endless black box pit, you know? So I think that's the most important thing. And then, and then the, the question is, how do we analyze a teacher's performance in the context of both parent needs and student needs? And at what point is there a tipping point where you need to initiate a process to consider that this teacher, this teacher may not be effective with students? And so this evaluation process and the feedback process of the student needs to directly feed into a point which you hit a certain matrix that, okay, we need to initiate a process that this teacher could potentially be put on a different trajectory. So that would be, that would be my answer.
Great.
Yeah.
And I think that runs us out of time, so thank you very much.
Great.